I'd like to call this March 24, 2022, regular meeting of the Strongsville Board of Education to order. Mr. Onagnastu, would you take the role?
Mrs. Bissell?
Here.
Mrs. Kilbane?
Here.
Mr. Miko?
Here.
Ms. Stowcek?
Here.
And Mrs. Howson?
Here. We are all present. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Next on our agenda is our district goals. We begin each meeting reminding ourselves of what our district's goals are. They are academic achievement and growth, financial prudence, and community engagement. And tonight, I would like to highlight two of those goals. In the spirit of March Madness college basketball tournament, Ms. Taber has created a career madness bracket for her third grade class at Chapman Elementary. Business professionals representing a variety of careers have submitted videos, and some are visiting the class in person to let students know about their occupation and answer questions about their career field. And then the students are going to vote on the professions to fill out their career brackets. And this is a good example, not just of academic achievement and growth, but community engagement. And I believe there's going to be a 60-seconds with the superintendent coming up on this topic, and I can't wait to see what career wins the March Madness career bracket contest. And next, we have recognition, and I believe Sharon and Haley.
If we have Jenna Namick, Holly Perkowski, Holly Ruman, or Alana Bandetta here, can they come up and stand over here? So Sharon and I started something with student achievement where we wanted to celebrate and acknowledge those teachers that go above and beyond to help students in our district, whether it's something that they do in terms of teaching in a way that is unique or thinking outside of the box, but they make learning fun. And this doesn't mean that people that are not standing here right now don't make learning fun, but these teachers were decided upon by administrators and coworkers saying that they do everything they possibly can. And it goes without mention, even just speaking to you guys and seeing you in action and what you do, and kids that see you in the hallway, and "Oh, my gosh, hi, how are you?" And your coworkers, you are the reason that Strongsville City Schools are what they are. And everybody else is as well. But these teachers are our teachers for February. Alana was part of February, but she is here today, and then March. And would anyone like to say anything about what they do, what their job is? You may not really have a choice. Maybe you can introduce yourself and say what you do, what your position is.
Sure, ladies. My name's Holly Perkowski, and I have been blessed to be in Strongsville. This is my 25th year teaching here in Strongsville. I taught kindergarten for 23 years, and I am the Title I reading specialist now for the second year at Chapman. So, and I just love these kids, and Strongsville's home, so.
My name is Jenna Namick. This is my third year teaching within the district. I teach marketing and business at the high school. I'm the deputy advisor. So I really think I have one of the funnest jobs in the building. Get to travel with the kids. We go to competitions. So they make my job what it is.
My name's Holly Ruman. I'm a sixth-grade literature and social studies teacher. I could not be more blessed to be part of Strongsville. It has definitely become my home, and these kids are everything, and I feel lucky to be where I am every day.
Hi, I'm Alana Bandetta. I am a French teacher at the high school, and this is my 12th year teaching. I was born and raised in Strongsville, and I tell my students first day school every year that my dream job is to be a French teacher at Strongsville High School. So I love what I teach, but most importantly, I love who I teach. And I know that not everybody is going to leave my classroom to become a French major, but I do hope that they leave knowing how much I loved being with them and how much I care for them.
And I think it shows by them being here today when they didn't have to be outside of school hours at the board meeting, and the excitement they have and the smiles they have when discussing what they do and what they do for their students speaks for itself. And fun fact, Alana and I went to high school together at Strongsville High School, and I had no idea she was who we were presenting the award to until we made eye contact in the hallway. And the first thing I thought of was, oh, my goodness, if I could pick one person I went to high school with that was born to be a teacher, it was you. So I think that we have some of the best teachers in this school who really, all the way through, when they were kids themselves, I guarantee all of you guys probably played teacher in your rooms or made fake lesson plans and graded tests. And I think it really shows with just how much you are an inspiration to your students. So thank you so much.
The sad part is a lot of them teach by grandchildren.
Bill Wengler, do you want to come explain the Polaris students of the quarter? What is the purpose of...
Sure, I was prepared for that.
I know. He's on the spot. He was not expecting that.
That's okay.
In the spirit of celebrating Strongsville City Schools, we want to celebrate our students at Polaris and the satellite as well.
So Polaris honors every quarter. They honor a student of the quarter at Polaris, but they do the same at the satellite programs. Those are the programs we have at the high school. They honor two students per quarter at the high school. So tonight, we have, we're going to honor, because I do think it's important that while Polaris honors them, and we tweet them out and all that good stuff, that, you know, they represent the best of Strongsville when they're at Polaris. So tonight, we're going to honor the two who received the honor first and second quarter at Polaris, and then the other four, two first quarter, two second quarter that were in our building at our satellite programs.
You better have six of them.
Six of them?
Yeah. So maybe I said that...
I think yours...
I talk in circles?
Yes.
Do you want to announce their names, or do you want to give me the chance to mess them up?
Well, I...
Go for it.
The first one goes to Marissa Mazzola, Medical Professions at Polaris. Congratulations, The second one goes to Evan Fall. I hope I said that right. Media Arts. The third one goes to Julie Bishara for Biomedical. And with our first quarter students, we're now going to have our second quarter. Leanne Hawke, this is for Aeronautics. Jocelyn Huber, or Hoover?
Huber.
Huber, I was right. And Navia Shahan?
Navia Shahan.
I thought so much about the last name, but Navia Shahan. The way Mr. Wengler spoke of these students and their accomplishments was, it left Sharon and I beaming from ear to ear just to hear how prideful he was about that. And it makes us so excited to hear how excited he is about you guys and seeing the difference of what every one of you are doing from biomedical to aeronautics. It's amazing to see what your potential is going to be and what you're going to become in the future. And I can't wait until we can all have a front row view of what you become. So don't forget about us when you guys become famous.
And they truly do represent the best. I just want to add, in the last two years, our Polaris attendance rate has gone from 14% to 31% in two years, the number of eligible kids, which more than doubled. So the word is out on how amazing Polaris is and the opportunities it offers. And these, and, you know, back in the day, it was like, you shouldn't go there if you want to go to college. That's not, obviously, that's not the case. And these are an example of kids who are definitely college-bound and still going to Polaris and learning a lot.
The sky is the limit for you guys. You're going to do big things, I know. Thank you, everybody, for allowing us to execute this program.
So it is a school night, and if anybody has any homework left to do, now would be a good time to escape. And thank you again, and thanks to the parents for bringing the kids.
Absolutely.
And we are all very proud of you.
It's great to see everyone smiling as they're leaving too, because they're so proud. It's, you can just feel it. You can see it. They're not smiling because they're leaving. They're smiling because they're proud.
Next on our agenda is public comment. I do have some public comment tonight. First is Bev Jones. Bev, you know the drill. You have approximately three minutes, and if you would let us know your name and address for the record.
Okay, I am Beverly Jones, and 15134 Camden Circle, Strongsville. And I was so proud of those students, weren't you? It says that Strongsville is excellent, because when our students excel, that says that our district is excellent, and that's great to see. But I want to mention a couple of things. Here's my slogan: Time is money. Now, we know that. Most of the people in this room probably agree with us when we say "time is money." Okay, we've all heard of it, and there's a lot of truth to that. Okay? Right, George? You know about money. All right. And as taxpayers in this district, I want to know how our time is spent and how our money is spent. And I again want to thank our treasurer. Our treasurer, wow, our reports are so thorough. Thank you. I know you put a lot of hours into this, and I appreciate how our money is being spent. I have some questions about some things, though, because I've been watching and listening. I'm not up here every time yet, but I watched February come and go on purpose, because that happened to be Black History Month, right? And I wanted to see if the tax, I mean, if the class time was spent well or was it wasted? And what I mean by wasted would be used on ridiculous topics that don't teach anybody anything, like this one's the oppressor, that one's the oppressed. We've heard all this. Those discussions, those assignments, okay? And I looked through some of the assignments that have come through classrooms in Strongsville, and boy, did I find some. Now, I only got three minutes, so I only picked one so far. But I have a stack of assignments that came through classrooms that particularly on that month disturbed me, because the students didn't learn a thing. Okay? Here it is, the one I chose. One example, I'm not picking on any class, any teacher, any grade. This is just one that I just pulled out of the hat, okay? And this is not unique. The assignment was, look up three examples of racial mistreatment against blacks and explain why they were wrong. Sounds nice. Sounds, you know, sounds bleeding heart. You tell me, though, if they had to look up the wrongs that were done during that research time that was spent, the writing time, and the discussion time, did one student in that classroom learn about one black inventor, entrepreneur, one black doctor? Did they learn about one explorer, or judge, or other prominent figure in not just Black history, but in history? No, they didn't. They just had to go figure out how the, one group of people mistreated another. They didn't learn a thing. That's why when I say "time is money," that was a lot of wasted time. Okay? Money was wasted. Hours and hours of time were wasted, both at home for the kids and in the school with the discussion of it all. The information was never obtained that they should have been obtaining through academic teaching, because the academics shift, well, actually, the focus of that particular and many others, classrooms shifted from academics to social justice. Okay? This must stop. This must stop. Okay? So, board, and I appreciate everything you do. I do. Dr. Reibeau, you're awesome. I want to see, though, because I've been told that critical race theory is not in the classrooms, well, it's disguised as lots of things. Oh, and I want to mention, too, that there is a page on Facebook called "No CRT in Strongsville." And on that page are words that are deliberately slipping into our classrooms disguised as nice little sweet words, but they are actually CRT words. So, no, they're not saying CRT. They're saying lots of words. And so far, we have 42, and you get four every week. So "No CRT in Strongsville" is a Facebook page I strongly urge you to look into. So you can stop this before it starts infiltrating our classroom on a worse level, but please don't tell me it's not here, because I have a stack of stuff that I can bring to you that are actual assignments and discussions that say it's in there. Okay? So anyway, Mr. Miko, my dear friend, I would ask you to please call a vote, so we can see what members receive and support CRT and which ones don't. You don't even have to tell us who's who, but how many on our board receive this and think somehow that this is good? And which ones are absolutely against it? Because we need to know that our elected officials either for or against. We're not going to attack anybody. We agree with some and we disagree with some. So I'm going to ask you to please tell us next time that we meet together, how many actually support CRT, so that we know. And I appreciate it. And again, time is money. Please use both of those to continue the academic advancement of every student in our district. Thank you.
Thank you, Bev. Next is Glenn Monich. Did I say it right?
Well, that's the way most people pronounce it. It's actually Menick.
Glenn Menick?
Yes.
I think this is your first time. You have approximately three minutes, and if you'd start with your name and address for the record.
All right. Yes, it's Glenn Menick Jr. I live at 10318 Stamford Court here in Strongsville. My thoughts I wanted to bring forward tonight, stay there. Hopefully, that doesn't count against me and my time. Come on, give me some. There you go. I work on sound for the bands I'm in, so I just had to be tight, and that's all. That's good. All right. Anyway, this is my first visit, as you said, to the Strongsville City Schools Board of Education meeting. I'm a proud graduate of Strongsville Schools, and I'm here tonight to see what takes place in a board meeting. And, you know, these days, I wanted to see if the current curriculum will be discussed. And regarding the curriculum, I am concerned too if CRT, or whatever, excuse me, those theories are called regarding the founding of our great country, if that is being forced on the students. If yes, then that would bother me, because I believe my alma mater has always been a source of excellence, teaching true and accurate educational programs. If no, then if it's being considered, I would still like to offer my opinions regarding those quote "theories." And that is, how can CRT or anything along those lines be considered to be true and accurate? Those theories are being pushed by a group of people who are trying to change our country, divide our people, and gain some type of power over others. How can it be decided a short time ago by this group of people that our history and the very founding of our great country is all wrong? What gives them the right to say the vast majority of our history taught all these years is wrong? Sure, mistakes have been made, but those have been rectified in a number of ways. Why can't everyone just move on from that and not dwell in the past? Our family moved into Strongsville over 60 years ago, one is considered to be a quiet, peaceful, farming community. It would be a real shame to see our great city divided or changed by teaching these quote "theories." If I'm wrong about that, I would like to see or hear someone prove beyond doubt that our great country was not built and established by the activities that led to the Revolutionary War and our Constitution, not in the year 1619 or something like that. One last point: no one group of people is superior to another. Race, creed, color cannot and does not determine the dignity of any person. After what I saw when I went to college and have seen throughout my whole life, I am convinced that our great country allows just about anyone to have a good life if they take the time and put the effort forth to look for the possibilities and opportunities that are out there and act upon them to better their lives. CRT, et cetera, and those theories are not needed in our schools, not wanted by the majority, and will have a negative impact in my feelings. Thank you very much for listening to my thoughts.
So thank you, Glenn. As far as our curriculum is concerned, as far as what we teach, et cetera, that's open to any parent, any community member, anyone who wants to know about those things. Mr. Onagnastu is our Public Records Request Guardian. I don't know if that's his official title, but it works. And you're welcome. And, you know, we do believe in being transparent. Whatever information you need, we can get it to you. And last is Jessica Platt. And I think, Jessica, you're a new face also. Approximately three minutes and name and address.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Jessica Platt. My address, 13694 Old Orchard Road in Strongsville. I currently have one child at Chapman Elementary in kindergarten and one in the early learning preschool, also in a Chapman classroom. During the board meeting in February, it was brought up that potentially having to revamp the way the preschool program's working, which I am not against. However, the concern is, is the fact that we are going to be trying to cram two more classrooms into the Chapman Elementary School. As parents of both the preschool and elementary, that concerns me. Why are we taking more space away from the elementary school that already has very little room? Why do we even have three-year-olds in with fifth graders? I might be a little more understanding about the preschool, maybe having a preschool to first grade wing, but right now, the kindergarten classes themselves are completely on the other side of the school. Why does this concern me? My preschooler, just a few months ago, having problems with using the bathroom, was picked on by an older kid because he's smaller and was wearing a pull-up. That kind of concerned me. I did address it, but it still concerned me that we were having these interactions, especially when we have kids of special needs in our preschool. I'm heavily involved in the preschool PTA as well, and notice the communication with our children at Chapman in comparison to Lund Road gets really confused, because they don't know if they're supposed to be part of the Chapman PTA, the learning early preschool PTA, what activities are they allowed to be involved in, which also affects community and parent involvement within the school. Dr. Reibeau stated in a meeting a few months ago I attended earlier in the year that the administration building has been left set up for classroom setting. So I would ask the question, why is that not our top option? Why is that a smaller option instead of cramming two more preschool classes into an already crammed elementary school? Development at the preschool age is crucial, that we set these kids up for success as they go into, enter elementary school and beyond. Obviously, many of the kids who attend the preschool have needs that need met, and I believe having them under one roof will not only help us utilize our services for them better, but make things easier for our staff, which then in turn would help them focus more on our children. This would also allow space at Chapman for our growing community. I live in a small development that literally in the last two years had four houses that did not have children attending the school, now do, ours included. So that's just my small development, and a lot of the houses in our development are older adults who have talked about moving in the next five years. So the thought of adding more kids to that Chapman Elementary School, if we don't have space for them, that could present a problem. While I understand it takes time and planning, I truly feel that this needs to be the top of our list, not only for our preschoolers, but the future of our district, because the children are our future. I know I'm not alone in this concern. Several other parents have brought it to my attention. So, you know, anytime I'm fully available to talk, the PTA has said they're fully on board to help whatever we need to do to help the preschool be successful and whatever that looks like in the meantime. So thank you so much for letting me speak tonight.
Thank you, Jessica. As a general rule, public comment is a time for us to listen, but there were some specific questions that I think Dr. Reibeau can give us the latest and greatest on where we're at with the preschool, and we're on hold.
Yeah, so Ms. Serso was here and presented about the change in the administrative rules that would necessitate a change to our preschool program. In the last month, there's been a lot of concern brought from districts around the state about whether this rule is truly necessary to align with the federal preschool requirement. And the assessment has been is that the rule is a little bit of an overreach to align, and there's some flexibility that could be had. So right now, the interim state superintendent is working with different legislative groups to see if it's a state Board of Education rule change or if it's a legislative change, but we are in a holding pattern to determine whether we have to go to the general education classroom model that Ms. Serso presented as the option if this rule stays in place, or whether we can remain with our integrated classroom model, which is what we have now. And based on the fact of if we would stay with the integrated model, we would not need to expand to more classrooms in Chapman. So that's where we're at right now. I've got another legislative committee meeting tomorrow that will find out more.
So that's the short answer. I'm not going to lose an opportunity. One, we can do a better job of making sure to communicate these things at the preschool. I can sympathize that it's of concern, but it was a softball, and I appreciate it. Later today or later during the meeting, we're going to talk about the Facilities Development Committee and making sure that we have enough elementary school space district-wide. So thanks for teeing that off. I appreciate it. Next on our agenda is approval of minutes. We have the February 15 and February 24 minutes. All video and audio recordings are permanent part of the minutes and available on our website. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Howson, second by Ms. Stowcek. Any discussion? George, would you take the role?
Mrs. Howson?
Yes.
Ms. Stowcek?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries. Next is Treasurer's Report. Mr. Onagnastu?
Thank you, Mr. Miko. I have a few items for your consideration. The first item being the financial report for the month ending February 28, 2022, which can be found Exhibit A. I also have the supplemental report, which I will go over. Should all have a copy at your desk, but I also have it on the screen as well. So same, the same format. So through February, and what February also includes, as I was working on February, in March, we received our final settlement for the property taxes. So that property taxes is our majority of our revenues, and they're collected twice a year. The settlements are collected twice a year, and we receive advances on them in January, February, and then settled in March, and then again in July and settled in August. So that's our primary revenue source coming in those months. So as I was working on the February month, then, we did receive the final settlement. So that incorporates it with these numbers. So what we're looking at is current year-to-date revenue collections indicate a 1.7 million favorable to the forecast, and that's related to property taxes, and I'll get into that a little bit more detail on the variance there when I get to that section. Current year-to-date expenditures are trending 70,000 over the forecast, and the potential net impact to the cash balance compared to the forecast would be a... be a positive one-point-seven million dollars at the end of the fiscal year if the rest of the months project out. The cash, with that, the cash balance at June would be six, sixty million point, point-nine, uh, which is about one-point-seven mil, than, more than the fifty-nine-point-one that was And adding the seven-point-seven million, um, overall, it would be an increase of revenues over expenditures of seven-point-seven million for the year, and within the year with six, sixty-point-nine million in cash compared to beginning balance of fifty-three-point-one million. So revenues compared, revenues, um, in February compared to last February, um, overall, uh, we collected twenty-five million, twenty-five-point-four million dollars, which is about four-hundred-thousand dollars less than the twenty-five-point-nine million dollars compared to last February. The main difference is, um, the change in the state funding formula and how those dollar, um, last year we received about one-point-one million in state funding. In February this year, we received about four-hundred-sixty-five thousand. Uh, there's two factors to that. One is the change in the funding formula, and then also, last year fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, there were COVID reductions, they were added back, and they were paid in a lump sum in February. So that, so there's two things with, uh, last February that skewed the numbers. But looking at year-to-date, uh, through February, compared to last February, um, local taxes collected through February were two-hundred-thousand dollars higher than last February. State funding is about a hundred-and-ninety-two-thousand dollars more, uh, year-to-date, and then all other revenues about five-hundred-thousand dollars less, and the majority of that is due to, uh, refund of prior year expenses, which were majority, um, the workers' comp, premium rebates and reimbursements that were given during fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, that added close to a million dollars. And then how it's trending to the forecast, um, as stated, revenues are trending about one-point-eight million higher than the forecast. Uh, one-point-four million of that is due to the local property tax, um, collections, and the breakdown of that really is, um, two, um, three things. So within the forecast, or within the revenues, um, I should say property taxes, uh, we received prior year delinquencies. So prior year delinquencies that were collected for this collection period were one-point-five million dollars. Uh, seven-hundred-and-sixty-three thousand were forecasted, so we received about seven-hundred-thousand dollars more, um, in comparison to the prior two years, uh, for the spring delinquencies. Last year, spring delinquencies were eight-hundred-thousand dollars, and the year before they were about seven-hundred-fifty thousand. So it was nearly doubled in the last two years. So that was, uh, one factor that contributed the increase. And then also, we had a large refund based on the mall board revisions. Uh, refunds paid from collections were, uh, forecasted at two-point-five million. Um, in total, refunds were, uh, two-point-two million, um, and a large chunk of that was for the, um, for the mall, but the variance under, what was forecasted to actual refunds was about two-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand, so that contributed part of the increase as well. And in comparison, the annual refund amount is usually about two-hundred-and-ten thousand. And then also due to the devaluation of the mall, there was a shift from the TIF collections bucket, so you'll notice in, um, it's part of other revenues, but revenue in lieu of taxes, which is the TIF, that's two-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand dollars less, but because the devaluation of the mall, it just, it was shifted from this bucket to property taxes as valuations decreased in the TIF, um, also decreased in prop, in the property tax bucket, but with property taxes, there's the effective rate, so the effective rate for commercial property increased and, um, the difference was made up in local taxes. So those three factors combined made up the difference. So when looking at local taxes, it's also looking at revenue and lieu of taxes together. So in total, although local taxes went up by one-point-four million, uh, revenue and lieu of taxes went down by three-hundred thousand. Overall, it's a net gain of one-point-one million. So any questions on that?
I'm looking forward to when we're a few more years out, because one of the effects of the, of the state addressing the funding formula is the, I call it a gimmick, but the gimmick of giving the money and then taking it away is gone, so it looks like they're actually giving less, but it's the net. But when you're looking at revenue, it's like, oh my gosh, I thought, I thought they were fixing things. And until you get to expenses, when they're not taking their cut back, uh, that you realize a net gain. But it does, uh, it'll be nice two years out when we don't have to look at that all the time.
Yeah, this year's not really an apples-apples comparison.
Right.
So next, next year should be an apples-app, more of a apples-to-apples and hopefully level comparison. And then projecting out the rest of the year for revenues, uh, the fiscal year's about sixty-seven percent complete, uh, with, with eight months that have passed, and as were forecasted, um, revenues are projected to be about two-point-one-nine percent higher than what was forecasted. And again, we'll update the forecast in May as we're required to do so and resubmit it to the state. Expenditures, um, expenditures for, for February in comparison to last February, uh, this February they totaled about five-point-nine million. Last February, they totaled about six-point-two million. Um, again, the biggest decrease is the three-hundred-thousand dollars. That's in purchased services, which were the past three dollars that we had of expense for, um, the community schools tuition that is no longer, um, being run through our books. So that's one of the shifts that we were just talking about, not an apples-apples comparison. In total, year-to-date, um, expenditures through February in comparison to year-to-date expenditures through last year, um, last year they totaled about forty-eight-point-one million. This year they're about forty-nine million, uh, about eight-hundred-and-forty-thousand dollars higher. The biggest increase is due to salaries and benefits, about, they're trending about two-hundred-thousand, or two-million dollars higher, netted against the decrease in purchased services of one-point-one million, which make up the increase of eight-hundred-and-forty-thousand. And how it's trending against the forecast, um, overall salaries are trending about a hundred-and-ninety thousand, um, under budget, um, purchased services and other expenses are trending about, um, I don't say budget, I mean forecast, um, they're trending about two-hundred-and-sixty over budget, and total net expense is about seventy-thousand dollars higher than the forecast. And when I said budget, I mean forecast, uh, the budget, the forecast is different than the budget, so we're trending under budget but over what was forecasted in November. And again, with, as I mentioned with the revenues, we're sixty-seven percent completed through the year, and right now we're about point-oh-nine-three percent, um, more in total expenditures than projected in the November forecast. So overall, with this increase in revenues, a positive to the forecast, and we'll continue to monitor through the rest, remaining months. So that concludes the report, or the financial report, if there's any questions.
Time is money. Get a move on.
Right. All right. So moving on to item B, grant approval. Uh, we have one SCF, Strongsville Education Foundation, a grant to be approved for Chapman Elementary for one-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars and ninety-eight cents for an organized differentiation project grant. Item C, a new fund for fiscal year twenty-two, a fund, district-managed student activity count, three-hundred-ninety-nine-four-nine for a high school men's volleyball club. And then along with that, item D, which can be found Exhibit B, is the program budget purpose goals for the men's volleyball club. And then item E is amended appropriations, which can be found Exhibit C, which incorporate, uh, which incorporate the, the grant and the men's volleyball club in addition, in addition to a few federal fund reallocations that are stated within the exhibit. And then the next two items require separate vote. Um, they're two items, they're both an MOU. One is for the Strongsville Education Association, and then the other one is for the local OPSI Association. Both, both the same, um, same MOU, uh, once we get in, once we do the motion, I can give more details about it.
Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that the memorandum of understanding between the Strongsville Board of Education and the Strongsville Education Association, as stated in the exhibit, be accepted. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hausum, second by Ms. Stovcek. Any discussion? George, what are we voting on?
So this is something that's been in the works for a couple of years with our insurance consortium, um, and then we're not the only school district that's doing this. This is, uh, Berea Schools and Homestead Falls is also moving forward with this as well. It's adding a third tier to our insurance program, uh, a Southwest network. So what this is, if, um, employees use Southwest Hospital, um, they'll receive a zero, um, deductible and a hundred percent co-insurance along with lower copays, so the employees benefit, and then the district will receive discounted, um, claims coming back to the district. So, um, it's looking to generate, um, movement to Southwest, and if we can do so, um, both the employee and the district involved would save money, and at the end of the day, lower claims because we're all self-funded, uh, lower claims result in lower premiums. It would, I'd say lower premiums, but as we know, costs are going to increase, but it would mitigate any higher premiums. So it's another step we're doing, so.
It will save money.
It will save money.
And then I will share, the city already has a similar program, uh, to incentivize employees to use Southwest. Uh, we all pay taxes, uh, for the benefit of having Southwest nearby, um, so anything we can do to, to incentivize that, I think is a good thing, and as, as George indicated, overall, it will help us save money, and that's a good thing too. Any other questions or discussion? Please take the roll.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Ms. Stovcek?
Yes.
Ms. Bissel?
Yes.
Ms. Cobain?
Yes.
And Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries.
Then item G, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the treasurer that the memorandum of understanding between the Strongsville Board of Education and the Ohio Association of Public School Employees, Locals Two-Ninety and O-Twenty-Eight, as stated in the exhibit, be accepted.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Hausum, second by Ms. Stovcek. Any discussion?
Same.
George, is it the same?
It's exactly the same.
Any other discussion? Please take the roll.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Ms. Stovcek?
Yes.
Ms. Bissel?
Yes.
Ms. Cobain?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries.
And that concludes my report.
George, can I ask you one question?
Sure.
I apologize, I didn't ask this before. I'm looking at item D, uh, men's volleyball club. I just have a question about its title. I'm looking at funds three-hundred-and-nine-thirty-five and thirty-six is boys soccer, girls basketball, boys basketball. Why did the, why do the volleyball players get to be men?
Oh, it's just a somatic, we can change it.
Okay. I just was, I was wondering if there was a reason or.
They will be boys until they are eighteen.
So that is just language.
Yeah, it's just how the high school turned it in, so.
Okay. Just so for consistency's sake.
We'll change it.
Thank you.
Yep.
That was awesome. Any other questions for George? Dr. Reiba?
Thank you, Mr. Miko. Uh, George, if you could log off of your computer. All right, so I have a couple of discussion items for tonight. The first one is wanting to have a discussion about the work that we have been doing, uh, around the district to take a look at different programs and different opportunities we have for students. As, as we all remember, last year we spent a lot of time focusing on elementary extracurricular activities, and throughout that work, we were able to add, uh, three additional opportunities to every elementary school, so now we have four extracurricular opportunities. Uh, we focused on that last year, um, and we had athletics on the, on the topic for last year, but we paused it into this year. So throughout the first half of the year, we've been focusing on, uh, you know, reviewing our entire athletic program and what we could do to help bolster support and continue to grow a premier athletics program for our district. So one of the things that I thought was important to kind of anchor our discussion about athletics in is our mission statement as a school district. So if you take a look at our mission statement, one of the first statements it says is that Strongsville City Schools, we're committed to hiring and developing a premier staff. And, and when we look at that, that's just not in the context of classroom teachers, but a premier staff, whether it's custodians or cafeteria workers, or coaches, or athletic administrators. Um, and so what we've taken a look at is, uh, you know, are we right-sized to support, uh, the administrative staff necessary and the staff necessary to run our athletic program? So the board, you and I started this conversation when we had our board retreats. I've been sharing, uh, updates in terms of job descriptions and rationales and benefits throughout my weekly updates. Uh, you have a handout in addition to the green sheet, you have another handout in front of you, uh, that just takes all the information you've already seen, but just puts it into one document that, that highlights, um, some of the benefits of what we need to take a look at. So right now in our district, we have over fifteen-hundred student athletes, middle school and high school. To run all of that, we have one athletic director that primarily, uh, his main responsibility is the high school. Uh, we have one secretary in the athletic department, and that's all the full-time staff we have to run our athletics program. Um, other, I'm not talking coaches, right? I'm talking about oversight and administrative oversight and, and secretarial support. Uh, we have an athletic coordinator at the middle school, that's a supplemental contract, so that means this individual is a full-time teacher, uh, but outside of, uh, his teaching duties right now, he helps support, um, the athletic department at the high school. So when we take a look at the number of athletes we have, the work that we want to do to build our program, to have vertical alignment between the middle school and high school, somebody that's not focused on teaching their first job all day, but able to support, uh, the work that's, that's needed, we need to take a look at additional support to, to help do that. The reason we're able to make it work is we currently have a gentleman that's been volunteering for years in our athletic department, that if he decided one day to not volunteer, we would not be able to make it work. Um, so that's something that we need to take a look at. So, so what I've recommended to the board at the retreats and, um, informally recommending here to the board tonight is that we add a new position to our district, a position that, uh, is, if not most, all of our league schools, um, in the Athletic Conference of an assistant athletic director. Uh, this assistant athletic director would have primary responsibility for oversight of middle school athletics, support high school athletics, and work as we talked about that vertical alignment. They'd be responsible for the hiring, the training, the evaluating of our middle school athletic program. Um, Denny, our high school athletic director, is working on developing, um, standards, uh, for our coaching, for our student athletes. We have an athletic TBT that's working on that alignment, um, as well as this individual will work on communication and marketing of all, all programs, uh, state reporting, all of those things that we need to do. Um, what is the hope that we're trying to get out of this is obviously we want more kids to participate. We want to have a great athletic experience for our students. Uh, we could do that by that alignment from a seven-to-twelve program, and even, um, looking at how we're working with our youth programs and even sixth graders, uh, to help support that. Um, and so those are some of the things, obviously you have a more detailed list and major duties and responsibilities of the job description, but that's a part of what I'm recommending to help support the athletic department is an additional full-time, um, assistant athletic director. It would be a two-hundred-and-fifteen-day contract. That means that person works, uh, the same schedule as ninety percent of all of our principals, um, and it's a, you know, August first to June contract. We would look for this one because sports officially start August first, that we would, uh, alter that summer calendar a little bit to maybe take some time off of June and add it to July, so we would be able to, to do that. The other thing that we're looking at is it says there's high-quality coaching at optimized levels. So again, we're looking in to make sure that we have the best coaches possible, that we're developing their capacity, just like we are other staff. Uh, but we, I had meetings with all of our, uh, coaching staff over the past month, um, shared with them that we wanted to hear, uh, their recommendations on, are they right-sized? Uh, do we have optimal levels of coaches, uh, in each of our sports? So we have a, a coaching analysis, uh, form that they completed for us. Uh, everybody had the opportunity to do that. Not everybody, uh, took us up on that because they said, "We're good. We've got the coaches that we need." Um, some of our, uh, folks, uh, did submit proposals for additional coaching. We also gave an opportunity for if this sport does not exist, or this activity does not exist, and it's in the realm of athletics, you would like to recommend an addition or a new experience for our kids or an opportunity, you could do that as well, and we've had a number of those, uh, proposed. So, uh, those. So those were just due on the 18th, so a week ago on Tuesday, the high school administration, middle school administration, and I and Jenny and George sat down and met and reviewed all of those and have done a cursory review. I'm not ready to share any recommendation at this time, but that's something else as we take a look at hiring and developing a premier staff. Those are two areas that we're focused on this school year. The second area of our mission statement is how do we foster a partnership with our community in terms of athletics? We've all, as a side note, I've done this with music as well and district operations overall, but focusing on athletics, we took a look and said, "How are we financing and supporting and expending dollars for our athletic programs and who is doing that?" We have different booster groups across the district. We have, there's hockey, there's soccer, there's football, there's basketball, there's the, you know, the main booster group. And then there's district funds. So George and I went through, you know, what are we as a school district financing through the athletic department? What are the boosters financing? And so also on the docket for this year is solidifying funding sources for these programs. Over the years, when money was a little tighter for the district, booster groups came in and picked up and paid for things that were probably district responsibilities. So the example I use a lot is, a few years ago, boosters were paying for ice time at the hockey rink. They were paying for greens fees at the golf course, whatever we call the floor at the gymnastics, you know, the gymnastics rental space, all of those. And we said, you know, that's fundamental to their program, that nobody should have to be fundraising to pay for that, the district should pay for that. So we're doing that comprehensively and we'll be reviewing that with the board to say, "Here's what we found, here's what we think are district expenses to support the program, and here are things that we think may be our district expenses to support the program." But the booster groups really love doing these purchases and they can keep that if that's what they want to do. So that's another aspect that we'll be looking at and hope to solidify. Here's what we would say are wants and nice-to-haves and booster groups. Those are all the lists of things you can support our athletes and our athletic program, and here are needs that we have to support as a school district or should support. One of the last things in the mission statement for our school district is providing outstanding facilities and resources so that we can ensure all kids can succeed in school and life. This is not something that we're focused on for this school year, but this is something as we continue to take a look at the evolution and making sure we're growing a premier athletics program, that we take a look at to explore all student athletic opportunities. Boys volleyball is a new OHSAA sport. Girls wrestling is a new sport. Bowling is popular in most school districts. We don't have bowling. There's other opportunities that are supposed to be approved by the OHSAA in years to come. So those are things that we need to take a look at. And there's middle school opportunities that some schools have that we don't, that we may want to take a look at, depending on how much competition is on this side of the county. So that's what I mean by looking at all of those athletic opportunities. What opportunities do we want to provide? That's something next year and beyond. And then with anything, we want to take a look at our facilities, our equipment, our resource needs, so that we can have all of that in place to support our student athletes. We've done a lot of facility upgrades recently with our bond issue a handful of years ago, but this is something that needs to be a continual focus and part of a planning process to make sure as to whether we look at the green space or fields or weight rooms or, you know, Pacquettan Stadium is in its 20s now. And that's something where you take a look at, you know, the concession area, the press box, restrooms, things like that, that may need to have some attention. We've already approved new lighting for the stadium coming up. So that gives context to that piece of it. So that's what I wanted to just share as an update with the board and the community, the work we have been doing behind the scenes and then are now ready to start making some recommendations here in terms of athletics. But the one thing that I would like to turn back to you, Mr. Miko, is I am asking for consensus for the board on an assistant athletic director. Consensus means that we would be able to post for the position, to start the interview process, get ahead of the game with that. Obviously, the official approval would become when you vote on that new position and that new person at a later date.
Any questions for Cameron?
I do have a question. Do you have a sense of salary range or is that dependent on the candidates?
No, we have projected a salary range for the candidate based on our updated administrative handbook.
Okay.
So based on that, this would be an entry-level administrative salary range.
Okay. Can you put a number to that?
Sure. Well, it depends on, right now, our base level salary for administrative is like 75,000 and some change in there. There's a range in that. So depending, that's this year. So depending on what happens, our administrative handbook ends this spring. So in that base salary of probably, I would say, 75 to 79,000 in there. And then based on experience would depend on where they are in that scale.
Thank you.
Cameron, is the, I look at the middle school and the middle school now is six, seven, and eight, and we keep on talking about seven and eight. Is there something that, outside of the building, that we need to concentrate on seven or eight? Or can we expand and expect that the middle school athletic director is going to work on all three grades as a program?
Yeah, so OHSAA-wise, there's no recognized sport until seventh grade. But in terms of what have been in some of the proposals and conversations is how do we build a feeder program starting in sixth grade? And so when we start to talk about what are some of the ideas that were shared, there's some opportunities with some sports where sixth grade is allowed to come participate like in an invitational type event. So that would be something that we would be taking a look at, is how do we build that program from sixth grade on up?
I'm just looking at it, you have the sixth graders in there.
Yeah.
You want to have, whether it's intermurals, whether it's what have you.
Sure.
I think it makes sense for the, if we do do this, to have that as part of it. I do subscribe to the idea that we need to measure it, and you told me 1,500, so we'll want to use that as our ratio and we can already grow that if we add sixth graders to it.
Hmm.
So, but yeah, I'm ready to support it. I think it makes sense. We did talk about previously that one of the things we will do is align some of the, I don't want to call them Mickey Mouse, but we have a lot of like stopgaps, whether it's supplemental contracts, et cetera. We'll be able to have a focused person handling that, so some of those supplementals will go away. Yes?
Yes, so some of them definitely will. Some of them we have to take a look at just in terms of, we haven't gotten into the details of coverages, meaning some of the supplemental contracts help support coverages for high school events, depending on this person being focused on the middle school and administrative help as well, because administration still does coverages. But yes, there's a strong possibility that we'll be able to do that further.
Anybody not in favor of posting and moving forward? You have your direction.
Thank you. The second thing that I wanted to share with you today is just to get the conversation going on our ESER budget. You have paper clipped, you have three documents together. We're going to start with the one that says staffing recommendations on top. So again, ESER, our federal funds that we receive, and they have a specific purpose, and that specific purpose is to respond to, prevent, address challenges that have been caused due to the pandemic. So we've talked about this a lot last year as to why are certain things not on here? They're not on here because the reporting that we have to do, which is extremely comprehensive, has to align back to the pandemic. So what I provided for you, and just to kind of get your bearings on the chart at the bottom, this would be year two. We had ESER 1 funds, which we've spent. We have ESER 2 funds, which we have to spend by the end of next year, so end of '23. And we have ESER 3 funds that we need to spend by the end of '24. All of, George does his work with the reporting system to define which of these go with ESER 2, which of these go for ESER 3. We're not going to worry about that tonight. We're just going to talk about what is in the ESER budget. So as you look at and you see on the screen the color coding, everything we're going to talk about right now is our items that are currently being funded with ESER money. And green means it was in the budget last year, it was in the plan last year, we are continuing those services as planned. Yellow means we want to continue those services, but we've tweaked the recommendation a little bit. And red means, hey, we said it was going to be a one-year deal, it is a one-year and we're eliminating it. So I'm not going to read through every one of these. There's no decision that needs to be made tonight. How I would frame your review of this, board members, is, is there anything on this list that you have further questions about? Is there anything on this list that you're not particularly supportive of? Or are there gaps in this list that you would like to discuss? But as we take a look at this first page, we have MTSS coordinators, RTI intervention specialists. We've had those new positions here to present a few months ago, so you have an idea of who they are and what they do. They were originally budgeted for one year only, to end at the end of this year. We're recommending to continue those on. However, that continuation would be based on the total funding that we have available. Once we get ideas down, then George will start working and putting actual numbers to it. So that is the recommendation there for those two positions. The social worker, we're going to continue on as originally recommended. Just as a note, this position, I just have it on here because it was created during this time, but it's paid through, through our student wellness funds, not our ESER funds, but it's still there. So we're continuing with the social worker. Special education coach, you met Ann a couple of months ago, we're recommending to continue that position. We also have another bucket of federal funds that were allocated throughout this year. They're ESER funds, but they have to be specifically utilized for IDEA, which is for special education. And so this position would be funded through that separate set of funds. It's like 300 and some thousand dollars that we have to utilize, and this would qualify. The reason the other positions, the MTSS and RTI intervention specialist, wouldn't qualify, although they work a lot with students with disabilities, they don't solely work with student disabilities. They work with students that are same-age peers as well, which means they don't qualify for that group of funds. Those funds can only be utilized for people working 100% with special education areas of focus. Going on to page two, one of the things we did this year is we made all music classes in sixth grade every day instead of every other day. This year, that qualified for ESER funds because fifth graders didn't have full-time instruction because of the pandemic. Their sixth graders, it qualified. Next year, it won't qualify to have sixth, as ESER funds. So what I'm suggesting is that I think sixth grade music every day is a positive. We're seeing significant gains with our kids because they're having band, orchestra, and choir every day. So if we're going to keep this, it would need to shift to the general fund, and it would be a .8 teacher. That's what it is now.
So what do you mean, it's a .8?
It's a .8 teacher. So what that means is the way we do this is it requires a sixth class from the choir teacher and a sixth class from, I'm looking at Jenny in case I say something wrong, a sixth class from a band teacher. And then we have a .4, so a teacher that comes in to teach two choir classes.
Orchestra.
Orchestra, thank you, orchestra. So that's what we need to make it every day.
So it's more than the .4 that it says?
If you look before.
Two sixth classes.
So that's a separate.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Two sixth classes, so that's a .2 plus a .2.
That's what it is.
Yeah. Hmm? Going through the green ones, that was a part of the budget. We said, "Let's continue it." That's what we planned last year and there's no change to that. COVID coordinator, it was supposed to be, and at the end of this year, yay! So it is.
Can I put a, can I put a maybe?
Yeah.
Hopefully.
No, there's no maybe.
Don't say that. I think those duties might have to be shifted.
Right, right. And then the only, the summer learning programming for the staffing component, that was something the board supported already. It was only planned for one year, we said, "Let's continue it on," so that's why that's yellow as well. Going on, the next page is, the blue means these are new ideas. So these were not a part of last year's budget, so we need, we wanted to share some ideas, if the funding is available, that we may want to look at. So one of the things we could possibly look at is due to the pandemic of the challenges that we continue to have for substitute staff, so that we've had permanent substitutes for the last couple of years that we could utilize these funds to pay for permanent substitutes for our teachers, some for our support staff, and some for our transportation department. The other thing that we could do with ESER funds is the impact, although the direct impact for kids in sixth grade is not there, we still have, just as we have gaps in student learning that's prevalent throughout the district, we have gaps in student learning of music that's prevalent in the upper grades. So we're still finalizing a recommendation, but when you have a large ensemble and one person, you really can't work with sectionals, or that means I can't really work with the trumpets or the clarinets or the violas as a whole group. So having a co-teacher in the classroom to help support that is something that could help address some of the gaps in our musicianship moving forward. We have a secondary math coach that we have, and that's provided phenomenal benefits. Aaron's provided the rationale that you have in front of you. It's a, we have a new math textbook adoption at the elementary level. We've been heavily focused for years for, in English Language Arts. Providing this ongoing support with a coach at the elementary level, we think would be a significant benefit. So you can read the full rationale there. And then we do have, as a district, we, by law, you have to have different aspects, implementation of PBIS, positive behavior interventions and supports. We have consultants that support us in this work, that work through not only meeting the state mandates, but making sure we've got a phenomenal program for supporting students with behavior. So currently, Andy, is it your budget that pays for this? For the consultants?
For the consultants, that's coming out of student wellness.
Okay.
Yeah, it was a portion that was coming from the county, wasn't it?
It was originally coming from.
The Adams.
Student wellness money intervention fund.
Okay, yeah, yeah. So we have it in a couple of different pots, but this would be another opportunity where it could apply here. So that covers all of our staffing plans and recommendations. Any questions or clarifications before we move on to non-staffing items?
You said with the PBIS consultant, we currently have this. Are we adding more or is this just getting it from a different fund?
This would be.
Correct, Andy, this would just be utilizing the funds, not additional consultants, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you go to your next stapled packet, it should say, "Non-staffing recommendations" at the top. A lot of the items in here are software solutions that we have, that we put in place to support throughout the pandemic in a variety of ways. And the green ones, we're looking to continue. The AT&amp;T hotspots, we purchased hotspots to be utilized for our students that had connectivity issues, and we just really haven't seen a lot of use of that. So we're looking to reduce that contract to less units. Dave, what'd you say? We have like two people that are, two students that are using them?
This term.
Yeah, so currently, we have two. So we're looking at, some of them, we would transfer to the general fund to be used by staff as needed as we travel or go to different locations, and then we'd keep five for students as needed. We did also, if you remember, last year, we purchased hotspots to be on our buses. That currently hasn't been a need. We still have the hardware and the equipment, so if we want to use it, we can, but there's no sense of continuing to pay for a contract that's not being utilized. We used the funds last year to buy Chromebook cases for freshmen in elementary. That's something that's going to be taken over by the tech budget. That was planned to be eliminated and we eliminated it. Some of the other stuff that you see in red, those were one-time purchases that we needed to purchase, and that's why those are stopping. Letters training is in yellow. Letters, we've talked about that training in the past. Steve and Aaron presented to the board in the fall. Because of sub-challenges, that training was not able to be implemented as planned, so that's just going to have to be extended. And so that's why we're looking for more years than were originally requested. Costs related to the summer learning program, we've already talked about. And, you know, we purchased custodial equipment last year with these funds, and we still have some need to replace some more equipment. So that's something, again, that if we have the funds, we would like to take a look at that as well. The only other new one on there is we've talked a lot. The only other new one on there is we've talked the last couple of years about strategic planning. Strategic planning does relate to, you know, how we are going to move forward from the pandemic and support our students in relation to the impact of the pandemic. So again, this is a new idea that if we have the funds available and can use the support of a group to facilitate these efforts for us, these are funds that I think would qualify.
I just wanted to circle back to the PBIS.
Yeah.
So those were paid for by county student wellness funds. Those ran out, and there was $5,000 that we needed to pay out of this year's wellness funds, but it's not in next year's bonus funds. So it would be a new, we would need to find a spot for it for next year to continue it.
Thank you, George. The last single page that I gave you was just the budget for what we have. So the right, if you want to look at the right columns, it just breaks down ESER 2 versus ESER 3. The bottom breaks it down for how much we're going to get for ESER IDEA. That's a combination of school age and preschool in there. And then the top-left column says, in total, for ESER 2 and 3, we had $6.1 million. This year, based on everything that's in and projections for the rest of this year, we will spend $2.3 million of that. So over the next two years, we have $3.7 million that we have to expend. And again, if you look at the right, $566,000 of that needs to be spent by the end of next school year. The majority of the funds we have left, we have until 2024 to spend. The last thing, as you see in the ESER 3, there's an asterisk. That just means, by law, 20% needs to be allocated to address learning loss, and we're above that percentage right now, based on our allocation. So I know this is a lot to go over and process all at one time. Again, there's nothing, decisions that need to be made, but if there's any questions, feedback, thoughts you have that we can research for you and get back to you at a future meeting, we can do that or talk about now.
Do they provide a specific definition of learning loss? You could, I mean, you could send it to me later, too. I just, I'm wondering how they define that.
Yeah, I'll send it to you.
Okay, thank you.
There's a, I'm trying to go off memory, but you also have to prove it to them as well.
Any other questions or feedback at this time?
So our homework as a board is, I think we need to especially drill down on new ideas to consider and follow up with questions for Cameron or George and his team, because I think that's where the real decision-making needs to occur. You know, for the community, in a roundabout way, from the federal government, the community has entrusted us with $6 million, and not only will we spend it, but we'll spend it wisely.
Okay, thank you. Going back to the agenda. We do have a couple items for your consideration under my section. Be resolved under number three. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that grade 3 Ohio State tests in English language arts and mathematics shall be administered in paper format next school year pursuant to the Ohio Advice Code stated and Senate Bill 216 as stated in Exhibit F. So every year, we approve this. We have an option for our youngest learners to do a paper versus computer-based, and that's something that we've done. So that's what, it needs official board approval for us to submit that to the state. Number four is in agreement with our OPSI union. So I'll read it. We'll take the first and second, then I'll explain why it's back on the agenda since you've approved it in the past. So, "On April 15, 2021, the Strongsville City School Board of Education ratified a three-year contract extension with Locals 290 and 028 of OPSI effective July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2024. To implement that agreement, a new negotiated agreement document has been prepared in collaboration with OPSI reps, which incorporates all previous approved memoranda of understandings as well as new wage schedules consistent with the board's prior approval and other language corrections and changes agreed upon by the parties. Accordingly, be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education approves the new OPSI agreement document in effect July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2024."
Do I have a motion?
Some of.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hausum, second by Ms. Stowcheck. Any discussion? Cameron, what are we voting on?
So in plain English, you've already approved the OPSI contract, and it was an extension agreement. There's nothing new you're approving than you've already approved. This is just saying, we're taking all of the stuff that we, that you already approved in the extension agreement, updating the document. So when we start negotiating in 2024, we have a clean, copied document to work from. So nothing new, already been approved, but it's now all in one document.
And just to belabor the point, we did, we did an extension to an original contract for one year. That was a two-page document. It was a very three-page document.
No, it was three years. The extension agreement was three years.
Three years. I misspoke. But it was a, it was a short and sweet document saying, we're just going to extend it, and all of the, all of the particulars were in that three-page document. What this is doing is simply incorporating that three-page document back into a single contract for the next time. But as far as the community is concerned, there's not, there is no change in the finances or any other issues with the, with the contract, and we thank our OPSI partners for the good work that they do. Any other questions or discussion? Please take the roll.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Ms. Stowcheck?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Cobain?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries.
That concludes my, my section of my report, unless you have any questions. Under business services, we do have a gift. The Strongsville Giant Eagle Market District donated 230 canisters of antibacterial wipes for the middle school and high school, and the result was from a collection from customers donating their complimentary canisters. Next up, we have our Director of Curriculum, Erin Green, with her report for the month. Erin?
Thank you. Good evening. I have five items tonight under curriculum for your consideration. Item number one is an elementary math textbook adoption. Be it resolved upon recommendation of the superintendent, textbooks be adopted for elementary math as presented in Exhibit G. These are grades K through 5, and it's a Savis product, which is Pearson. I know Michelle has had an opportunity to look through it, and we're very excited to move forward with this adoption series. Item two is a financial algebra textbook adoption. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the textbook be adopted, financial algebra is presented in Exhibit H. This is for a new course at the high school that was part of the Program of Studies last time that I presented. Just as a side note, it's a phenomenal course that is college prep math, but it's all financial-based. So it's teaching eight pillars of finances that kids need. So banking and economics, car ownership, investing, all of the skill sets that kids really need to know. Item three, advanced placement statistics textbook adoption. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that an updated copyright continuation of the current textbook be adopted for AP Stats as presented in Exhibit I. This is the same textbook we have, just an updated version. As the College Board often changes exactly what they are prescribing us to do, we have to then follow suit and ensure that our textbooks mirror that. Item four is an overnight trip for the high school boys varsity lacrosse team. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the permission be granted to the boys varsity lacrosse team to travel to Columbus, Ohio, April 29 through 30 for competition. Transportation will be by school bus, and expenses will be paid by students with proceeds from fundraising. And the last item tonight for your consideration is a student-teacher placement. This is looking ahead already to the 22, 23 school year, and a student from Baldwin Wallace being placed at our high school. Thank you.
Thank you, Erin.
Not that, not that easy.
I didn't think so. Yes, sir.
Some of us remember there's been a lot of heartburn in previous math adoptions. Tell us about the math adoption. What, what should parents expect? What should students expect? Will they learn how to add?
They should learn how to add, yes.
Subtract?
Even yes, subtraction is included as well. We did a very thorough process in finding which textbook we wanted to pursue, which series. Quite involved in that we, Amy Penny and I, elementary curriculum supervisor, she and I first collected, you know, what are local districts doing? What are the big-name publishers? Who do we want to pursue for math series? And then which ones are aligned with Ohio standards, because that's critical. We then assembled a committee of teachers. We had some gifted intervention specialists on it, representatives from grade K through 5. We took seven of the series that we felt met the needs of our district, and we started going through them. And we had a multi-point rubric. We compared our standards from the state of Ohio to what the book presents, the rigor that we're looking for, and we very quickly narrowed it down to two series that we were very interested in. We had those publishers come in and present to us. From there, it was a very clear choice that we liked Savis. The technology in it is, it's really impactful. I think parents are going to enjoy that aspect more so than the Think Central platform they may see now with GoMath. It's rigorous, so kids will be learning. That was the big comment we heard. You know, it's, it's rigorous, it's tough. It is, but it's also the level of the standard. So we've talked about that a lot as, to the board and with the board, that we need to make sure we're teaching at the level of the standard. We can't reduce what we're teaching. So we're going to see that, and there's probably going to be a little, what'd you say, heartburn initially, the first year. It's going to be a learning curve for teachers and students. But I, I feel that people are going to be very pleased with it. We also then, after we did the two presenters, we took it to the teachers. We had them look through it. We got feedback from teachers. We then had a community night where we opened it up to any community member that wanted to come in and take a look at it, fill out a rubric, ask us questions, and we now present it to you.
I think one of the, anecdotally, I think one of the issues we had with GoMath is when parents were doing, whether they were doing homework with their, with their own children or whatever, it's not how I learned. Why are we doing this? How is, what, what should parents expect with Savas?
There may be some similar instances where standards look different now, different ways to, you know, multiply with the lattice method, if you will. However, the, in our opinion, there's a better job of explaining it. So kids would bring home the paper without the textbook, and parents would say, I don't know how I'm supposed to do this. This isn't the way I learned it. With the online platform, there are a lot of videos and ways that parents can log in. Kids can log in and kind of walk them through the steps. We think it does a really nice job explaining the concepts.
Good to hear. I'm sure the parents will be excited to have their children teach them how to multiply.
Agree.
So I do want to compliment you. We, I, I think we went about this the right way. We, we had a process. We, we got the feedback from the curriculum people, from the teachers themselves. We involved the community, and so I'm looking forward to this actually being what we want it to be, which is teaching our, our children, you know, reading, writing, arithmetic. It's important. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Director of Student Services, Andy Trujillo, with his report for the month. Andy?
Good evening, members of the board. This evening, I'd like you to consider the extended year school year program for students with disabilities under the general fund. Be it resolved under the recommendation of the superintendent, the Board of Education approves the ESY, as we call it, program for school age and preschool students with disabilities at Strongsville Middle School. ESY services would be June 21 of this year to July 21. And I'd just like to add that we heard some parent feedback last year to, for us to make better efforts to align it more toward the summer learning offerings, to make sure it's more equitable compared to the summer learning offerings, and we have done that. We believe we have reached the fairest option for all through our planning process. Any questions for me?
Thanks, Andy.
Good, thank you.
Thanks, Andy. Next, our Assistant Superintendent Jenny Pelco with the Human Resource Report. Jenny?
Thank you. Under Human Resources this evening, I have the following items for your consideration. Under E1, we have the retirement of a certificated staff member. Under E2, appointments for non-certificated staff, appointments for certificated staff, appointment for a certificated substitute, appointments for non-certificated substitutes, appointment for a certificated athletic supplemental contracts, appointment for a non-certificated athletic supplemental contract, appointment for a home instruction tutor. Under E3, we have a change in status for non-certificated staff. Under E4, continuing contracts for non-certificated staff. Under E5, medical leaves for certificated staff, medical leaves for non-certificated staff. Under E6, an unpaid certificated leave. And under E7, we have our volunteers and one volunteer coach. And that concludes my report.
Next, with his 2020 debut at a board meeting, Director of Technology, Dave Binkley.
Oh, he'd come up here for like, what, three times a year?
That's right, just a few.
And you're welcome anytime you want, Dave.
I'm always in the back, but I got a couple items here tonight for the board for approval. We have an amendment for 21, 22, 22, 22 school year technology upgrades. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent, the following amendment being made. Amendment to Agenda March 18, 2021, F, Technology, that the $300,000 increase for the purchase of Chromebooks and Google Chrome Management Licenses, amend the amount and the cost not to exceed $450,000. Replacement in student devices, one-to-one in student Chromebook carts reaching the life, end of life of 21, 2021, 2022 school year. And item that, number two, be resolved upon the recommendation of the board, the superintendent, that the Board of Education approves the purchase of Chromebooks, computers, and Google Chrome Management License not to exceed $300,000. So the way that these two, three, these two items come upon, we do have a lot of items that we're using this year that are end of life. Through my projections, we're looking at about 1,300 devices that we're actually using right now that are end of life. That was due to supply chain issues during the pandemic. Right now, supply chain's pretty good. We were told that if we can order some things right now, we'd probably get them within a couple of months, and then we can give them to the students to use as soon as possible. So by mending this to use this year's funds, it's our best interest. And then the other one is a thing that we do every year, to when George rolls over to the next financial year, we use those funds to purchase new devices for the following year. And then the next item here is bump armor Mohawk Chromebook cases. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education approves the purchase of student Chromebook cases at a cost not to exceed $20,000. Right now, we give Chromebook cases to third graders and ninth graders with their devices, and they can use them throughout the year. And then if they are damaged, students can then replace them at cost for what we purchase them. The next item, item four, is our annual contract with Meta. Meta Solutions Master Agreements, Schedules 1 and 2 for 22, 23 school year. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the Board of Education approves. Schedules 1 and 2 of the agreement between Meta Solutions and Strongsville City Schools. Schedule 1 will provide information technology services for 22, 23 at an annual cost of $94,605. There is a 2% discount if early payment, reducing the annual cost to $92,711.92. And Schedule 2 will provide Info Ohio Library Services for 22, 23 at a cost of $16,379.29. So Meta, Meta Solutions is our ITC that we use. There's 18 of them in the state. We, we chose Meta for various reasons. The biggest reason is that they are probably the Power School ITC in the state of Ohio. They have a really strong partnership with them. And through their stuff that we do, we are a pretty Power School-heavy district. We do a lot of things with them. We collaborate with them when they try to do new things within Power School and get some of the state seals and some of the things that they're doing with graduation. We're one of the districts that they rely on to kind of come down and test things out and get our feedback on. And also, Power School is like the ITC right now, working with the state reporting. And also, Power School is like the I T C right now, working with the state reporting. So helps us be in front of the curve. As if our I T C is helping, you know, create the documentation or the process of reporting things, then we're right there with them and, you know, helps lower our learning curve or Teresa's learning curve for us as a district.
Do we have, you alluded, there's 18 I T Cs. Do we have a, we have a choice in which ones we choose?
Correct. Previously, they were kind of created as regional areas to connect schools. But now, thanks to the growth of technology, you can pretty much choose any one. They're kind of à la carte for their services. Like, right now, we use Meta for our services for like Info Ohio and our Power School programs. But we actually use a different I T C, Nowaka, for helping some of our internet firewall and, and services that way. And that contract is a, is a multi-year contract that's actually coming up, I believe, next year. But Meta is one that we do every year for their services of the programs.
And also our fiscal support, too. So ultimately, you feel this is our best value? Not necessarily our best price or our best val, but our best value?
Yes, best value for the services that they provide and the context they put us in with. When we have problems with Power School, we contact Meta. And we work with Meta's team. They have a Power School team that we work with. But also, they pull in people from Power School. We have John Paul Raymond that comes over and talks to us. He flies in from Boston and talks to us at least once or twice a year. So we have some very strong connections with the actual Power School program and not just the I T C providing the services.
Any other questions? Do you have your PowerPoint on the different Chromebook models that we're getting?
Right now, there's only two out there that's available. I could tell you those, but I didn't actually make anything on those.
I was teasing, but thank you.
Thank you, Dave.
And that concludes my report.
Any other questions for Cameron? Next on our agenda is report on Polaris Career Center. Mrs. Bissell?
Yes, thank you. A lot of exciting things going on at Polaris. As you could see tonight, we had students here to honor. At our last Polaris meeting, we honored three Strongsville students there as well who have received entrance into the Aspire Nurse Scholar Program. I've mentioned them before. They're Jayanna Evans, Raven Nichols, and Hannah Odatella. Only three students that qualified, and they were all Strongsville students. So that does tell you something about Strongsville and our participation in Polaris and our, our students and how they're succeeding in the community. I think what's really nice about bringing them to the meetings, about bringing the students here, is that you get to see them, you get to put the face with the name. And in this case, we got to hear from these ladies, and they were, they'd only been in the program three weeks at the time that they spoke. But already, you could see the things that they were learning and sharing. And, you know, coming and speaking at a board meeting is nerve-wracking for adults. And so when we bring our students in, it's, it, they're nervous, but they even shared then, like, this is an opportunity for them to practice their skills and get ready to speak, you know, to patients or whomever they're working with, supervisors. So it was really an exciting opportunity to hear from those ladies. We also, there's a lot of shifting leadership at Polaris because of some retirements. So one of the positions just of note here is we're gonna have a new coordinator of satellite program, programming. So those programs, like we heard today, some of the biomedical that we have in our high school and middle school, Mike Mail will be around now, leading those programs. Last week, the Strongsville Middle School hosted the Polaris Palooza. Unfortunately, I was out of town because I would have loved to have seen this. But we hosted, again, our involvement, we hosted all of the districts that are involved in Polaris at our middle school. And we had a very good showing there. They had different competitions, robotics, those type of things. And in the mad grab competition, Strongsville took first, second, and third place. So our students are excelling in all areas academically at Polaris. And then finally, we have our Project Lead the Way Biomedical Science Satellite students are competing in the H O S A Future Health Professional State Competition this weekend in Columbus. So that includes Berea, Strongsville, and Omstead Falls students. So we're sending our students there, and we just want to wish them a lot of luck and success as they compete. That concludes my report, unless there are any questions.
The Polaris Palooza, that, there were some nice articles on Cleveland.com. It was robots. I don't know what else you needed. Next is report on legislation. The, I think Columbus is concentrating on trying to figure out our legislative maps right now, so there isn't a whole lot to report. I will report that the latest development for House Bill 126, which is the bill that would adjust school districts' ability to contest property tax reevaluations. Back on March 16th, which was last week, the Senate insisted on their amendments. So now this, this bill will go to a conference committee for a decision. And as I was checking on updates, one of the things that I found ironic is on the webpage that talks about the legislation, the local impact statement procedure, whether it's required, the answer was no, because there's minimal cost. And maybe, maybe administratively, there's minimal cost, but if it goes through the way the Senate wanted to, it could be, have a lot of negative costs to our district. So we'll continue to pay attention and advocate for our taxpayers. Next is Board Liaison Reports, City Council. I will, both Laura and I were in attendance at the last city council meeting, and I want to give a shout out to city council. They had the Purple Heart, the Military Order of the Purple Heart was in attendance. We had Mr. Randy Hausen, who is a Purple Heart veteran, along with John Looker, who is also a Purple, Purple Heart veteran. And they announced and decreed that Strongsville, the city of Strongsville, is a Purple Heart city. And I found the, the ceremony very moving. All the gentlemen were, in attendance were Vietnam veterans, and they spoke about their program. It's one of the few programs that has been in existence from George Washington's days. And talked about how the, the purpose is to make sure that we remember our history and remember the sacrifices that our military makes for our freedoms. One of the things that was really nice, and one of the gentlemen there gave a, a Purple Heart veteran coin to everyone in attendance, and I thought that was really very moving. So that was the important part of the city council meeting. And I'll have a few more things to ask or talk about during Board of Education Other on that. Next is Strongsville Education Foundation.
Yes, they met two Thursdays ago. And we spent a lot of time talking about what the education foundation does for our students by way of grants. Well, tonight, we get to talk about how we can help them. The Strongsville Education Foundation, Foundation is hosting the Jockeys and Jullops Kentucky Derby Watch Party, followed by Night of the Races fundraiser on Saturday, May 7th at 5:30 PM at the Erdenfeld Event Center. You can come and eat Southern Fair by Driftwood, drink bourbon mint juleps, and merrily bet on your favorite horses while wearing your derby attire. The event cost is $100 per ticket. You can get a table of 10 for 900, and they have 60 horses that they are selling for $25 apiece. Complimentary beverages and cuisine. There'll be a wine pool, prizes for best hat, lots of fun that night. There are sponsorships, sponsorships available, and you can get the details on the www.dseffoundation.org. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Laura. Next, Strongsville PTA Council.
Just a fun thing, there will be a rocking at Strongsville Middle School. That's April 1st from 6:30 to 9:00 for sixth to eighth graders. The theme is Pink Out. Not sure what Pink Out means, but I guess I'm not up with that. But anyway, tickets are on sale, and you can go to Facebook and look up the council on their Facebook page or the PTA, PTA's Facebook page if you want to get tickets for that. So, and then they're also planning an end-of-the-year dance in May for the middle school, which will be held on the football field, tentatively. They're planning that. So it's, it's fun to see that our kids are gonna start having fun again. So, thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Next are our Board Committee Reports. Finance Committee?
Finance Committee has our next meeting, April 6th, 7:00 PM, here at the admin building.
Policy Committee? We do have some policies on our agenda tonight. Facilities Committee, we did meet, what, last, two weeks ago? Last, it was last week. The days, the days run together. Our next meeting is May 17th, 2022, at 6:30 PM in these offices. At our last meeting, we did, the committee reviewed the presentations from the architects and came to some consensus. And I believe they're gonna be coming to us with a report on that and a recommendation for an architect to help us with our elementary schools and how we should plan for them. Business Advisory Council Committee?
Our next meeting is Friday, April 1st, at 7:30 AM, right here. So be there.
Next on our agenda is the Consent Calendar. Action by the Board of Education and adoption of the Consent Calendar at this point of the agenda means all items appearing in the agenda with asterisks are adopted by a single motion unless requested otherwise. Do I have any otherwise? And I don't believe we had any adjustments to the agenda?
Treasures. H C, change the description from.
Yes, we do have to knock the men down a peg that they will be the Strongsville Boys Volleyball Club.
Boys, two men.
Any other corrections? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hausen, second by Ms. Stovcek. Any discussion?
You're never gonna get them.
What?
It was me.
Stop sounding like each other. Motion by Mrs. Hausen, second by Mrs. Kilbane. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please take the roll.
Mrs. Hausen?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Ms. Stovcek?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
And the motion carries. Superintendent's Timely Information.
Couple things just to remember. I put it in my update this Monday, but we are coming close to the College Credit Plus deadline. So this is for any students currently in sixth grade through 11th grade. The program's eligible for kids in seventh through 12th. There's an intent to participate Google form. That's there, it's due April 1st. The reason I put this out so many times is because we missed the deadline, and people expect exceptions to the deadline. There are not exceptions to this deadline, unless you move in from another school district that didn't have College Credit Plus. So please make sure, it's, it's on the website, it's in my email that was sent out. The high school has sent it out numerous times. Please complete that if you're interested in College Credit Plus next year. And we're coming up then into our Spring Musical, which is always a phenomenal event. Mr. Jenkins and all of the team and choreographers and musicians that make it a special event this year is the Addams Family. And the performances are there through Thursday, April 7th through Saturday. And brown paper tickets, which is what they've used in the past few years for ticketing, is there, and the prices are listed. We then move into our Spring Break, which is like the latest spring break in the history of spring breaks, but we will get there. And then, don't forget, and I'm sure this is in the Mustang moments, Mr. Faust puts it out there every Friday, that we've got some Strongsville Mustang gears in the Mustang Team Shop for the spring is available if you want to get some Mustang spirit wear. And with that, that concludes my timely information.
Thank you, Cameron. Next is Board Bylaws and Policies. We are going to remove policy 8510 Wellness from our approval, and we'll bring it back as a discussion for the board as a whole, and we'll discuss that at a, at a work session. But there's a, a few things we want to wrangle. Any other concerns? So third reading means we do have a motion for adoption. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hausen, second by Ms. Ms. Stovcek. Any discussion? I will share with the community that the majority of these are simply making sure we're in compliant with either federal or state changes to laws that we have to follow. Any other comments? George, would you take the roll?
Mrs. Hausen?
Yes.
Ms. Stovcek?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Ms. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries. Next is Board of Education Other. First up, we have reimbursable expenses for an OSBA workshop. Be it resolved that the Strongsville City Schools Board of Education approves reimbursable expenses for Michelle Bissell while attending the OSBA workshop, Board 201, A Deeper Dive. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hausen, second by Ms. Stovcek. Any discussion? What did you learn, Michelle?
We get to meet a lot of other districts, which was really helpful in discussing things that they've seen versus what we've seen, I think was the, that was the part that was valuable. They do updates on legislation, scenarios, you role-play. I was gonna say, the role-playing was very memorable. So it really was a, a good experience.
Any other questions? George, take the roll.
Mrs. Hausen?
Yes.
Ms. Stovcek?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Abstain.
Ms. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries. And the second is the same reimbursable expenses for the workshop, Board 201, A Deeper Dive, for Mrs. Hausen. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Jinx.
So moved.
Buy a hair, Mrs. Bissell. Do I have a second?
Suck it.
Second by Mrs. Kilbane. Any discussion? I would like to compliment all, both Michelle and Laura on taking their responsibility seriously. We all do, and it is, it is a time commitment, and we do take that commitment seriously. So thank you. Any other questions? George, take the roll.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Ms. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Ms. Stovcek?
Yes.
Mrs. Hausen?
Abstain.
And the motion carries. Do we have any other Board of Education others?
You do.
I do. So after the ceremony at City Council, I went out in the hallway and talked to the gentlemen. And I was talking with Randy Hausen, and he did say there are some programs for schools. So I have their cards, and as long as the board is of goodwill, we'll pass them on to Dr. Raiba. And I think the history department at the high school could take them up on the offer, and we can, we can entertain becoming a Purple Heart school district, or something to that effect. And then the other Board of Education Other I had is I just wanted to share with the community that yesterday, I was able to attend the all-city chorus concert. And it, I just wanted to give a shout out to Mrs. Ganzi and her students at Whitney, and Mrs., Ms. Blazi and her students at Kinsner, and Mr. Muth and his students at Strongsville Middle School, and Ms. Iker and her students at the high school. The students at Kinsner taught me that I can't talk about somebody named Bruno. I still don't understand it, but I'm not gonna talk about it. And Mrs. Ganzi's students, one of her students is the granddaughter of Michael Stanley, and they sang My Town, and they did some of the best air guitar I've ever seen. And it is a belated happy birthday to Mr. Muth, but we all enjoyed wishing him a happy birthday, and I could tell Mr. Muth enjoyed it a lot, too. And Mrs. Iker's students, they did a, their show choir numbers, and we discovered we need stronger sleeping gear because the futon collapsed on the one student, and he's okay. So we're allowed to laugh about it. But I just wanted to share it with the community because it just made me happy. It made me happy to see our students being students and doing things that they love. And I gave shout-outs to these teachers, but we had an all-city orchestra and band and, or not band, but orchestra and et cetera throughout the, the week, and I think a little bit in the previous week. And it was just nice to see our students excelling at doing what they should be doing. So wanted to give them a shout out and thank them all for making me smile and laugh. That's my Board of Education Other. Are there any other others?
Mr. Miko, we did want to talk about the possibility of moving the May 12th board meeting date that conflicts with, when we moved to the second and fourth Thursday of the month, it now conflicts with senior salute. the month, it now conflicts with Senior Salute, which is a wonderful high school event, so whether we pick a due date or move it to an earlier time, maybe something, it doesn't have to be done today, but take a look at the calendars to see if we want to move that date so people can attend that event.
Thank you for the reminder. I know Mrs. Hausum doesn't want to attend Senior Salute at all, and just wants to keep, just wants to keep the meeting as assigned, but we will entertain other board members who want to change the date. So we'll, we'll just have to send our calendar dates to Cameron, and we'll find a, a new date for that meeting.
An option is, just to put it out there, have the meeting at 6:00 at the high school, and then any other board members that wanted to attend Senior Salute, they could. It, it is one of the best events.
It is a, it is a great event.
To see that stage completely packed full of seniors receiving scholarship money from school and, you know, our community partners.
And why would we want to ruin it with a board meeting? No, that's a different story. So we'll figure that out, and we'll figure out whether to do it early or another date. Meeting notification, we have a regular Board of Education Work Session Thursday, April 14th, 7:00 PM in this building, and a regular Board of Education meeting Thursday, April 28th, 7:00 PM in this building. We do have reason for executive session on the topics of?
To consider the employment dismissal, discipline, or demotion of a public employee, and to prepare for negotiations with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Hausum, second by Mrs. Kilbane, any discussion? Take the roll.
Mrs. Hausum?
Yes.
Mrs. Kilbane?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Ms. Stovcek?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
The motion carries, we will enter into executive session at 8:55. We have no expectation of further business. Thank you for your attention, and have a nice evening.